All right, well, good evening and welcome to our March School Board Work Session. Today is Thursday, March 3rd, 2022 at 5:30 PM. And we're in the central building, second floor conference room. And so this is our work session, so we're mostly here to listen. And our staff spotlight this month, it looks like we have our, some of our elementary FIAD teachers. So we have Mrs. Bogan and Mr. Turick. So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, fantastic. So as you know, we've been working this, this whole school year and making sure that all of our staff has an opportunity to get to know you all better, to be able to share with you and our community what it is they do for our students and why every single one of their roles is so important for our child, our children's experiences in Wasika Public Schools. So I'm honored to have our elementary PE team who was able to make it tonight to come and share with you a little bit of what they, they do, why that's so critical for our overall development of our kids. And then they'll be able to answer any questions you have about what they do as well. So I hand it over to you two.
Perfect. Well, I'm Connolly Turick. I'm at Hartley Elementary. I do all of the K3 physical education as well as the K3 DAP, which is developmental adaptive physical education. So I handle that both at Hartley as well as we do some outsourcing with some Sacred Heart and some things of that nature. And then we have Beth Bogan who does 4th through 6th grade over at WIS. And we have a short little presentation for you, nothing super crazy. We just wanted to get some bullet points and things out there, just so there's some definitions, you know, kinda where we stand and the things we're trying to get done. So in short, physical activity is something that really sharpens the thinking, learning, and judgment skills of students. It also has been shown to reduce the risk of depression, anxiety, obesity, other related complications, diseases related directly to obesity. If you look at the recommendations from the CDC, we want kids to be doing at least 60 minutes of moderate to vigorous activity at least three days a week. So we do our best to do that. You'll see in the next slide coming up, just some examples here. Aerobic activity, jumping, some strength training. Yes, we're trying to do some strength training stuff as young as kindergarten. Got some individual and team activities, some duo sports. Just trying to really get these fundamentals of skills and movement down because if we can start there, our kids are so much more likely to participate in sports later on, whether that's at the middle school level, the high school level, college, or just recreational for general fitness. So here, we just have the MINSHAPE Physical Education Standards. MINSHAPE is just the Society of Health and Physical Educators. There's SHAPE America, which is the whole national one. MINSHAPE is just obviously the Minnesota branch. In terms of K6, when it comes to standards-based curriculums, it really highlights standards 1, 4, and 5. So if you look up there, 1, 4, and 5 are highlighted in blue to kinda make those pop. And then the underlined terms are just really the general idea of that standard. So motor skills and movement patterns for standard 1. Standard 4 is exhibiting responsible personal and social behavior, respecting self and others. And then number 5 is the value of physical activity. That's where we build most of our curriculum on for the K6 level. Specifically at the K3, we like to really hit the motor skills as well as the value of physical education. And, you know, we're not making anything crazy happen there, but we're talking, hey, is it a good idea for you to be active when you get home? Yes. Should you go outside and play on your swing set or go play basketball for 20, 30 minutes before you go on your screen time? Yes, that's something that we really wanna encourage. We'll go as far as to do some really basic nutrition with K3. And it's, hey, if I have french fries and apples, we try and make a joke out of it. Which one tastes better? Everybody throws their hand up, french fries, french fries. Well, which one's better for your body? Well, then they know the apple. So if we can start with little things like that, just trying to build all those foundations and slowly moving forward.
So this is just kind of a summary, or a summary of what we have. Hartley students have two to three days a week of physical education time for 27 minutes. So one week is two days, the next week is three days, as long as we have a full five-day week. And then at our school, we are about, about 75% of our school days, we have our students. We're in a, it's kind of a crazy schedule, but we're in a group with our art, media, music, and then we have our two FIAD staff. So it comes up to about three out of four days, but we actually meet with our kids for 10 days. The other teachers meet 10 days, and then they're off and they're in art. So it kind of is a weird rotation. This is again really important, and it kinda goes back to one of the earlier slides, but just the connection between the brain and the body. Physical activity and movement stimulates brain function. So getting those kids moving as often as we can actually really does help with learning. Physical activity increases adolescent self-esteem, reduces anxiety and stress. It, it has an effect on mental health, may help increase students' capacity for learning. So this is kind of that, again, more of that reason why that movement is important. And then also found that there have been increases in some programs for physical education, and it did not lower test scores. So just because you put them in, because there's some people out there that say they don't need FIAD, they should sit in the classroom to learn. And actually, if they have more movement, does not affect their test scores negatively. All right, so the next couple of slides just talk, talk about a few things that at our school, WIS, we have been or are currently able to do. A little bit, I would say, non-traditional for a middle, you know, upper elementary, 6th grade is kind of considered middle school. We have a really unique situation here, and I think we're very fortunate. Swimming has been something that has been kind of hit or miss depending on how long we have our students. And so right now, we're at 40 minutes, which is a little bit tight to fit our kid, to get our kids to the high school, change, get them in the pool, actually swim, get them out, get them dried off and get back. When we were at our 45 to 47 minutes, that little bit makes a difference. So we're still working on maybe implementing that again. So that one won't happen this year. Another highlight was our Mount Cato tubing and skiing. We did not get to go last year because of COVID. Made this, this year a little bit, the kids get nervous going over to Mount Cato for some people that have never seen it, just to be able to experience this big place. And I love the, the nervousness that comes out in the kids and that anxiety before. And then we always do a reflection after they go and to be able to see how many kids are excited and proud of themselves for being able to try something that is really challenging. And we know that there's some kids that don't, that just are like, nope, I've tried it and I am done. And that's okay though, because that is that standard where I'm trying to figure, figure out what I enjoy. We, we still focus on all of the same things. We have our, our specific skills. We also talk about appropriate dress. We live in winter, we have a long winter sometimes, and the kids aren't always in tune to how they should dress and how to dress appropriately. So that's important that we touch on that there. Another area that we are able, or another unit that we do, the kind of dual, is we do a roller skating and an ice skating unit. So those skills that we're able to do in two different units with our kids, again, working on a lot of motor skills, working on balance. And then again, those can transfer to skills outside of our class. We don't do hockey on skates, but that's something that kids can get a little bit of motivation and maybe try something different. And then another area where we work on is, is biking. We are so fortunate that people before me wrote a grant to get us bikes, and we still use the bikes and upkeep our bikes. So our kids are able to use the bikes, learn how to use them, learn how to make sure the bikes are safe. And then Wasika has some really good paths that we're able to get out on, as well as talk about road safety, which is not always, as I drive around, not always something that our kids know or just choose not to follow. And so it is important, so. And then the next couple, I, we do a little bit in our building. We work on physical fitness, we do fitness testing, we talk about goal setting. So we also use our heart rate monitors, which were a donation from our PTO. And our kids are very motivated by the heart rate monitors to know how my heart is working, what it feels like to be working in those zones. As soon as we, we don't always use the watches because they're not always appropriate or fitting with what we do, but when we put them on, the kids are motivated. The colors, the numbers, whether it clicks as to what it really means, but they're able to do it. So that is something that is, is amazing for the kids.
So then standard 4, kinda how we mentioned before, one of those main standards we based on. Our new behavioral push at that K6 level is the Blue Jay Way. So respecting self, others, equipment, respectful learning. That's something that we, you know, it's hard to put into words what exactly the Blue Jay Way is, but I know at Hartley with our K3, we had these little Blue Jay bucks. And you give them to kids, and it just means the absolute world to them when they get a Blue Jay buck. Just the simplest kind act is just so great to see. So being able to relate this to everything we do in physical education is a really important thing for us, especially when you look at, when they slowly get into these duo and team games and they're getting really competitive. It's important to remember that, and I'd have a conversation with this particular group of second grade boys, they're extremely competitive, and I'll always remind them, I love that you're competitive, I love that you try hard, but there's a setting to be extra competitive, and there's a setting to learn. Here, we're trying to learn. We want to help our teammates get to the level that you are. If you're the best basketball player in your class, that's fantastic. But in five to six years, when you're starting on your basketball team, if you're, if you were not nice to that person in your second grade class that was trying to learn basketball, they're gonna remember how you treated them during elementary basketball. You know, so that's something we wanna push is, let's start building that team camaraderie aspect now. And it starts with something as simple as I know when I conclude all my classes, we just have a Blue Jay Way breakdown. They all meet in the gym, just like any other sports team would. They put their hands in, on the count of three, they do Blue Jays. And if I, it's gotten to the point where if I forget it, the kids are like, whoa, Mr. Turick, we didn't break this thing down yet. I'm like, you know what, you guys are right, let's meet in the circle, we can be 30 seconds late. So trying to get that, you know, that standard 4 is a big thing for us with that new Blue Jay Way push as well.
And just to touch on that with us, we, we just finished a unit of recreational games. Again, not a lot of, a lot of physical fitness that comes along with it, but we kind of took it to that next level, or not the next level, but kind of that same thing is, they had lots of different partners during the thing, and the first thing you said is, good luck, let's play. And then when they were done, it was immediately, hey, nice game, that was a great shot. And to actually say that is challenging for some people because it's hard to recognize they're the enemy or they're the, you know, nope, you can't have a game without that other team. And so we've done, we spent quite a bit of time with that this, this past week, couple weeks in our units. And then standard 5, I kinda touched on this a little bit when I talked about those unique units that we get to offer, but just finding that thing that they like to do. Why, knowing why it's important to be active, but then what do I like to do? Do I like team sports? Do I like where there's just two of us playing? It's okay to participate in things that are just you. And to, to know that, yep, we have to have you try everything because you never know what you're gonna like if you don't have that exposure. These next couple of slides talk about some things that we're able to offer at our school. We started when we moved from this building to our current building. The, there's not really a place to hang out. Our commons became our hangout spot. So having the walk and talk in the morning went away during COVID, we've kind of brought it back. The kids need it and beg for it. They have a spot where all they do is walk. There is not anything else to do but just to walk, and they need, the kids that want to move have the opportunity to move. Morning soccer and floor hockey, again, it did go away temporarily. We're looking at bringing back that morning floor hockey, again, for those that want it and need it. And we can use lots of different aspects of the game. We bring in student refs, and we can have all of that in, as well as spectators. It's okay to go and watch. Nutrition, we talk about a little bit about what is a fruit and what's a vegetable. And it is amazing how some of them do not know. And so we use our lunchtime where it's very informal to talk about those things. Okay, so you need a vegetable and fruit, what do you have? Perfect. And just understanding those little basic nutrition pieces. This year, we started a walking club, which was a huge hit, bigger than I thought. We, we walk our path at lunchtime, and we walk about a mile. And it's every day, it is informal. You come when you want, we leave at a certain time, we get back in time so they can go to lunch. We have an incentive program for them. Every time they complete five miles, they get a little, either a bracelet or a little trinket. And you can see the kids walking around with these little shoes on their, and they absolutely love it. And it was a bigger hit than I thought going in. And then also being able to, our kids' heart challenge, formerly known as Hoops for Heart or Jump Rope for Heart. Now it's just about, it's more focused on fitness and what things can I do to keep my heart healthy? Everything from salt to sugar to exercise to sleep. So that's what we're working on right now. And then this next slide is, a lot of the things that we're able to do is, is because of our PTO in our district. Our PTO is amazing, and they do a lot for us as well as other people. Again, our heart rate monitors, we have peg boards, which the kids have open for them usually at our walk and talk in the morning, where they can either go across or up the peg board. The incentives for our walking club, we just got those for our, we ran out of what we had, so we needed to go to PTO to get those. They always provide our ribbons for our track and field day. And then recess equipment, we just got, again, another chunk of recess equipment that will be able to be used by our community as well.
And then just to kinda summarize, just to touch base on a little bit of the thing that we do at Hartley, again, that functional movement and primary skill development, just some answer, just some, not some answers, some examples for you. Gross movement, throwing, catching, coordination, eye to foot, hand to eye, rhythm and dance, functional fitness, yes. Right now, if you walked into my gym at any given time, you're gonna see kindergartners or third graders doing squats, lunges, variations of the plank, as well as working on our pushups. I think it's something really important to get that foundation of, hey, these are actually fun to do. And when you know how to do them now, you're gonna be so much more likely to do them later. You're gonna have so much more fun when you get to FIAD at WIS. And that's one thing, one big thing I always push on the kids right now. Some seasonal activities, we are actually just finishing up our sledding and some snow shoeing. I believe snow shoes were a gift from either some donors or PTO or somebody. I found them in my equipment room, and I was like, we gotta use these, so we're gonna take advantage of that. Same thing with that outdoor safety, you know, kids need to have their hat, their mittens, their gloves, their snow pants if they wanna participate. Try and make sure they understand, look, if it's outside and it's the middle of the day in summer, you can wear your hat, you can wear your sunglasses if you wanna keep your protected from that sun, even though it's only 20 something minutes, we don't want anybody going in sunburnt. And then kind of like the, the big crown jewel of my curriculum is the Hartley Activity Day. Unfortunately, I didn't get to do it my first year because of COVID. Last year, it was a pretty big hit, we got some community sponsors to come in. We had golden shoe winners, which were just some misplaced, a left shoe or a right shoe that didn't have the pair with it anymore. So one got a can of spray paint, sprayed them all gold, and each grade level had a golden shoe class, which not only got some shoes out of my equipment room, it passed them on to some teachers. And they don't love the shoes, they don't smell great. So they, they still have them, but yeah, that Activity Day's been great. And then our last slide is just, you know, thanking you for the time today, it's much appreciated. And we'd like to open the floor for any questions you might have and go from there.
You still doing the Whitey Amit square dancing thing?
You know, I, I wish I had a dollar for every time I got asked if I did the square dancing. Not anymore, unfortunately. The, the record player that had the music for it did not work anymore. So we, we did have to move on, I'm sure I could get some digital format, but you know, if that's a request, we can definitely talk about that, Charlie. We can do something about that square dancing potentially.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't graduate from here, but I know we got a couple Wasika graduates that went through the Whitey Amit square dance.
No, I love the teamwork, getting that at a young age, so they can just build on that.
Right, exactly.
It's so cool.
And we just got done seeing some, some great kids. If you look at the graduating class of last year, the Kyriece and Ryan and Morgan group, they'd been playing together since they were three years, like literally third grade. And I'll never forget a story that Mr. Teeters told me once is that Ryan went up to him after a game, and he goes, you guys ever lost? And Teeters was joking, and he goes, no. And we're like, really? And he's like, no, coach, we, we never lost. They went from third grade through eighth grade and never lost a basketball game. So if we can work on that teamwork now, we might have, we might have something like that on the ropes again, which would be fantastic.
They saw some of the kids this morning going down the hill on the west side of Hartley. And you didn't, when you take a look at that hill, it is fairly steep.
It's even, and it was slippery today because it got melted yesterday and it all froze up. And like I said, we literally had to make kids move the sleds to one slide because I was down there standing in front of trees to make sure kids weren't doing anything. I had two of these old foam hockey sticks, and I'm literally, literally like pucks, I'm just trying to push them over to the side, like put my application in for the USA curling team after that. It was, it was quite the experience for sure.
So during distancing and stuff, I, I felt the most for your guys' department. What, how did you guys promote all of your standards while kids weren't in front of you?
Would you like to go first? Who's like, you go first?
I will tell you that it was, I'm glad I, my first, about the end of the year, those couple months, was truly spent just connecting. And I felt like I was not doing that part of my job. It was truly, I felt like mental health, like I needed to check in with my students. And that was truly where we were at. We would ask, what are you doing? Some were and some weren't. I'm like, are you in the same position you were the last time I had you on? That's what I felt like. The second time around, when we were doing kind of that halftime, it was a little bit strange, but I would put my computer up and do my workouts. It was more fitness, I would say, because it was behind a screen. And we would do things where they would pick, have choices, and I was in my office, like they were probably in their bedrooms, and we would get on and we would do little mini workouts. And so not a lot of skill development at that time, other than when they were in person. But it was, it was a good learning experience for me to know that, you know what? You just, you focus on whatever you can, and we couldn't do everything. We, we missed a lot of things, but it was really about those connections, as well as we can move in a little space and.
I, I would say the same thing. I would say, and I don't even know at the K3 level, I don't even know if I'd call it fitness, I think I would just call it get the ants out of the pants movement type of thing. And I'm sure I got on some parents' nerves because we, we would literally do, we're gonna go on a scavenger hunt, go find me something square and green, and you see 30 kids bust out the screen. They're running around, I'm hearing kids, quit running in the house! I'm like, oh, this is my fault, sorry. So we did all sorts of things, and yeah, it was more of the connection, just getting to see those kids' faces because you want them to remember how important it is that, just moving. And it's gotta be fun movement too. If you're, if you're not enjoying it, then what really is the point? We're not doing our jobs if we're not making it purposeful, enjoyable, so. And that's, and that's kinda how I teach too, is relationships are always gonna come first with me with students because if they don't trust me and they don't like me, they're not gonna wanna come to my class. I don't care if you're a kindergartner or if you're one of my senior student athletes. If you don't trust me, then you're not gonna wanna come anyway. So relationships always come first and foremost. I think that was one of the benefits of that COVID time was getting that distance. Like I can still connect with these students, they still, we feel like we didn't miss a beat when we finally came back, so that was pretty nice as well.
Really cool, thank you.
Do you have a favorite unit that you like teaching or that the kids really like the best?
The elementary kids, they always go bonkers for basketball. I, I'm not sure why. They love basketball. I really like soccer. I think soccer's a fun one because you see a lot of kids, and I know this year, we have a, we have a lot of students that have come from Texas and spend a lot of time up here. And some of those students are phenomenal at soccer, I've noticed. And being able to level that playing field, and you're seeing some students that come from out of state, and they're really good at different activity, especially something that not everybody is super strong at in K3. You'll get one kid out of maybe 20 that has exceptional soccer skills. But it's kinda cool to see something like that where, you know, they, a lot of them have played it at some sort of low level, so they have an experience, but they're not all really good, so they all really just care about scoring goals. But that's always kind of a fun one to do for me is soccer as well.
I, when the kids ask that question, which is your favorite unit to teach, my answer is whatever unit we're in. Because I feel like I have one of the best jobs because we get to play games every single day. They're like, is it game day today? We play games every day. But I do like it when we have opportunities to offer whatever to the kids. We're currently finishing up our badminton unit, and Mr. Scheid is teaching badminton, but we have opened the gym up over our recess time. And a few people the first day, and then the second day was all, and this is all by choice. And today, there wasn't enough space for all of them to be in the gym doing, and it was a beautiful day out doing badminton. So anytime that we have the opportunity to offer additional, hey, do you wanna come in and do this? The kids love it. And it's, it's different kids, it's different personalities, it's different interests, and I love being able to offer that. And so I know we'll have our floor hockey, and we'll have a group that will come in for that. We'll do ping pong, and we'll have kids that'll be interested in, in doing that. It is wonderful to be able to offer to so many different people.
Yeah, like kids love that, being in the morning, coming in for those activities, oh, that was the best.
And that's something that is offered at a lot of schools. I, you know, I feel like it's, school doesn't start till school starts. So we'll take you whenever we can, you know?
It's like you've taken it beyond just the FIAD class, not just the class, it's about everything you do all day.
Do we, do we call it elementary FIAD or do we call it elementary FIAD in health?
We just call it elementary FIAD. So there are a set of health standards, those actually don't start until the fifth grade. So the, the health standards are 5 through 12, so we don't even have any health standards, but yeah, it's just FIAD.
But some of the things you had up on the screen were, I would say, were health-related.
Yeah.
Physical health.
Yeah, trying to, and that's kinda thing, it's really a holistic thing. And that's kinda what I tell some of my student athletes right now. Hey, it's great if you come in and you work out super hard three times a week for an hour and a half, but if you go run through the drive-through and get two Mcoubles and a large fry, you just kinda ruin that whole thing, you know what I mean? So even though we don't have standards, it's nice, I wanna get them as prepared as they possibly can be for that, when those standards officially hit. So no, there's not standards, we just try and sprinkle as much of it as we can.
Now you're telling me.
Now I tell you.
Any other questions or?
It was a great presentation.
It was.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, well, thank you for the time, it was awesome being able to speak to you guys, and I'm sure we'll see you around town for sure.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Appreciate it very much.
Sweet, awesome, thank you.
So Eric and I were talking last week when we were setting the agenda that we kinda started the staff spotlight thing as one of our goals this year, but we're totally gonna carry it on after this year because I'm really, I enjoy it.
It's one of my favorite things about our workshop.
I agree, so. So, but yeah, anyone listening at home, if there's any particular staff you want spotlighted, feel free to send us a message because we will definitely reach out, so. Otherwise, we'll just come up with it on our own. But yeah, that was great, thank you. Moving on then to our discussion about facilities.
Yes, well, thank you. And so tonight, our conversation is really that. It's intended to be a conversation about next steps with our facility planning. We know we have gathered a lot of information over the last several years through both task force presentations, through other information that we've been able to gather. And so tonight, what I would like to do with Elizabeth also is on the call in terms of our meeting tonight, is real share with you kind of where we are right now, some of the information that we have access to, that we've learned over the, over the last few years, what we think our next steps really could be as a school district to make some more decisions about what our next steps would be with facilities, and then tell us some timeline of how I wanna hopefully advance us down that road. And then of, of course, I wanna gather feedback and gather thoughts from all of you. Sometimes when this gets to be a three-plus-year process, we feel like we are in different stages at different times. You take two steps forward, three steps back, five steps forward, one step back, and where really are we on the cycle? And so what I would like to do tonight is, as best we can, really to identify clearly for ourselves. That's why it's more of a workshop discussion than a board meeting report. Here's where I think we are on the process, and you all can give me your feedback if you feel differently. And then what I think we need to do over the next few, next few, uh, next few weeks and months. I have a series of handouts for you, information, just additional details that we didn't wanna, not really, like I said, not really a board presentation type thing, that I'd like to share with you. They're just, they're for resources right now, so we can kind of holistically kinda see here's where we are. So Caitlin, if you'd like to go to the first slide there. So last week, or I guess our last meeting, we had our task force presentation review. I wanna just once again say thank you to our parents, to our community members who took part in that task force. It spent a lot of work over a series of six meetings to get to a spot that although it didn't feel like there was a lot of closure, it made a significant amount of progress into what our next steps could be for our facilities, which built upon the 2019-20 task force, which I, I like to consider more of our internal pre-task force with, involved our board members and administrators and teachers and that sort of thing. So you really have to have both those, both those perspectives. I was just talking this morning with some colleagues about what does it really mean to engage your community? And it means to authentically engage your community is to ask for insight, ask for input, truly be able to live with what the response is, you need to be able to hear it. And then we'll talk about this in a little bit about our survey, what do we really wanna know so that we can respond appropriately to the, to the results? But it can't be something that's predetermined. And if you remember from last spring, I know it's been a while, we talked about end determined versus end in mind. And right now, what our task force has kinda laid out for us is that there are significant needs at Hartley Elementary. And one of the things that is the end in mind is that there are two primary options that we really could be considering right now. One being the remodeling of the Hartley Elementary building, and the other being an addition on our intermediate school building to create more of a campus model. But that's what I call end in mind, it's not end determined. Because if it was end determined, then why are we asking people for their feelings and their thoughts? Because that's not authentic. And I can, I can say from my perspective, and I know from all of yours as well, from our conversations, we all have our thoughts and our, our insights and what we think could be the, the best option, but we truly went into those task force meetings wanting authentic feedback. And so, and they gave us that, which I really appreciated that. But I think one thing that's becoming exceptionally clear is that there are needs at Hartley Elementary, is it become our top priority. Other considerations, what I, what I, I put that bullet there to remind myself that we did talk about. We have other, other buildings that have needs. You know, we have some needs at Central in terms of maintenance needs over time. Nothing that's what I would consider to be in the age of a potential crisis, like we're dealing with more at Hartley, but there are things to consider. We, as we expand our career pathways, do we need more space? but there are things to consider. Um, we, as we expand our career pathways, do we need more space for um our CTE programming at some point? Um, do we need an extra gym based on gym space? So those are all considerations that our task force looked at, special needs programming for special education, food service, do the kitchens work? I mean, we looked at all those considerations. It still came back to really priority number one, being the Hartley Elementary situation that we're working through. I linked and I put it in the update for you yesterday too. I I think you'd seen that before that, but if not, we have it linked to you, your update yesterday, last week's task force presentation. I wasn't going to go through it all in detail again, we heard that last time. But I wanted that there for your reference, kind of where we are now. So additional details, well, the information that we didn't really get into at the last meeting, but I want to share a little bit more with you now tonight. So uh, I want to share, here's where the cost range are for these projects. And they are different from the last time we, the last presentation that we would have seen with dollars attached was June of two thousand twenty, I believe, uh, May of two thousand twenty. Uh, and so these are, these are different as as costs have done what they are. But as as Wold has worked through that with us, one of the things that we're very conscious of right now is these are very large ranges. Because number one, we're projecting twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five prices potentially. And we're also knowing that all of these projects are scalable. So if we, if when we get to the point of asking our community of their insight on this, um, we have, we can scale these. So remodel the Hartley Elementary, right now we're looking at a range of twenty two to twenty eight million dollars. Not potentially for that project. That's a big, that's a big swing, I realize that. But that also is scalable um based on what we have. Comparatively speaking, in two thousand twenty, um, what your presentation in two thousand twenty would have said is seventeen point eight. So that's what the, that's how much the increase has been in the last almost two years in terms of projection of costs. So I'm going to think about, that's why when we talked about our last week at our meeting, we're getting up to the eighty percent of replacement cost type issue to remodel that building, something the board needs to consider when we get down that road. That um, you know, eighty percent of the cost to build new is what it costs to remodel. What's the most um appropriate thing? Now, we also talked about though, at our last, our work session or our presentation, that that was the lower of the initial cost of our two options. Building on to an addition on to the intermediate school, um, you're going to find a bigger range here because there's more scalability options. That could be nearly about the same as the remodel in twenty three million dollar range. It could go as high to thirty three million. And for thirty three million, that's kind of a complete renovation of the entire current WIS building as well. Or near full, not probably a hundred percent, but very close. And so that's why um that range is higher because we're talking about a difference between adding classroom and instructional space, expanding some commons area, um, adding a gym versus also reconstructing a lot of what the WIS building looks like to bring that up to reset the clock, if you will. So we're looking at a twenty three to thirty three million dollar range uh for that project. That comparatively speaking to two thousand twenty, Elizabeth and I were visiting this morning about how the difference was. That addition um uh was listed at about fourteen point five million in two thousand twenty. Why it's so different now is because at that time that was just adding classroom spaces. And now we realize that we'd have to expand the cafeteria, we'd have to add a gym space. Those are the things that are just kind of would have to is if we have to get to that range. So I think no matter which project we we go to, we would be looking potentially at a low, low twenties for millions of dollars for projects. Of course, you can go as high as 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 thirty three to thirty five million if we wanted to add something else on there. But these projects are all scalable in terms of what we actually find out for the budget. So those are real numbers and those are, those are something we have to wrestle with over the course of the next few months as a board, where we want to go. So what does that mean as far as tax impact goes? Well, what I want to do, and this is kind of a series of of pass around papers type concept is look at our partners and elders and our, our um, our task force did see these as well. It's very important to recognize that these are preliminary estimates. And these are for us to work on our discussion. They're not something that is is going to be a hard and fast. We will do this um for final numbers with whatever current bond rates are if and when we were to look at something like this. So what I want you to draw your attention to is on the left column there, looking at the Hartley remodel, but also that would be about the base range of of the WIS addition. And at this point, um, they just use twenty four million as a spot there. And that gives you a sense of what a hundred fifty thousand dollar or any various market value home annual impact on taxes would be. And all the way over to the um, the Hartley relocation to WIS at thirty three million is listed as, that would be with the full or near full renovation of the current WIS as well to get up to that dollar value. And the middle column, we, is the one that was kind of deemed probably not the most cost effective or appropriate method, that would be to build a brand new standalone K three, that thirty one million dollar range there. So this is something for your reference as you think about what would really the impact be?
This is a yearly increase in?
Yes, annual.
Okay, so if you had a house that's worth two hundred thousand dollars, the yearly increase on maybe going to full bore would be a hundred ninety two dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, hundred sixty seven, but yeah, that's the right column here and yes. Yeah, for the year. Right.
Per year for the, for the length of the bond?
Correct. Correct. Right. And there is, it's some, there is some idiosyncrasies there. You look at the difference between thirty one to thirty three million doesn't seem like a lot. Because when you get to, I mean, it is a lot, but from ones, like that particular column, one sixty five to one sixty seven, it's when you get to that level, there is some flattening of the rates, but you already had a pretty substantial increase at that point.
Question, um, if a two hundred thousand dollar house, let's just go with the Hartley relocation to WIS thirty three million. I think Charlie just said, said this, uh, taxes would increase a hundred and sixty seven dollars a year.
Correct.
For how many years? Because what's going to happen when the high school bonds are paid out?
Well, you're, you are one handout ahead of me. So what I wanted to share with you next, I'm going, I'm going in sequence here.
Well, I got one more question.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, let's say your house is worth two hundred thousand a day and with inflation going, it's worth two hundred fifty thousand dollars five years from now. Does that move, we move down, we move down the the chart here?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I, I have a question. Like I said, I mentioned it when we had a meeting, you know, the facility task force, you know, like I said, we moved in two thousand sixteen, right after the bond went through. And our taxes doubled. I mean, I, I was not, I didn't have a time to pull my taxes, but you know, you all said, well, it was not the bond, it was something else. But it doubled from exactly the the year then we, you know, two thousand fifteen it passed and two thousand sixteen it doubled. I mean, if I'm looking here, it's, it was thirty tough, thirty millions. It should not have. So what else could happen that happened in two thousand?
Your school district portion of your tax?
I, I didn't have time to pull it out. All our taxes, all three together from what we have two thousand fifteen, well, what we saw before, when we got our first year, it was doubled comparing what we were told we will pay. So I just want to bring it up. I don't know enough about it, but this seems to me based what happened two thousand sixteen, I just think like, well, you're saying it should be, you know, three hundred dollars a year. And then if it comes because there's something else suddenly, you know, how do we tell people? No, this is really what will happen to you next year and your taxes will not go more.
Well, but that really is what happens for the school portion. Like, like this number is the school portion. What happens to the city and county, county amount, I don't know that I have an answer for that.
I don't know. I'm just saying together, you know, what happened at that time that suddenly it should doubled if school, like I said, everybody told that, oh, because it's thirty million dollars bond. I mean, that was in my mind. I mean, if it's really, you know, how the bond can in, in make impact on, you know, county, do they did some, you know, it should not happen, right?
Well, it wouldn't happen from the school tax.
I think, I think Elizabeth wants to jump in on.
I'm just saying, this is, I don't know enough and I would need somebody to sit with me and pull our taxes and just get comfortable because this is, I truly, what I, what we went through and come after six years again through it, I just don't feel comfortable.
One, one thing too that people sometimes forget is county, school, city taxes, the rates could stay level, but if they increase the value of your property, and like Charlie said, last year was worth two hundred thousand. For some reason, the assessor says, well, now it's worth two hundred fifty thousand. Your taxes go up even though nobody raised their rate.
But to, but to your.
But if you got, if they happen, and I don't know that this happened, but I can take a guess and say if the value of your property went up at the same time the city's rates went up, the county's rates went up, and even the school rates maybe went up.
Just saying, it was the hugest jump for last seven years. From two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, the taxes just increased every year since then are going up. But this was the year that just doubled. That's all. What I'm bringing, I like said, I don't know enough. Like I said, if somebody has time to sit with me and go over our taxes, I would appreciate it, but I just need to raise my concerns because.
Elizabeth, did you still want to say something or?
I, I think it's more just to reiterate the point, this would be the one component that we could isolate to to communicate within individuals. There might be other things that happen with our general school taxes, our our tax impact, that is outside of what this is. And I, and you guys have already hit on it, city and county are separate from the school district as well. So there's a lot of different counterparts. But when we're looking at this one component, we can isolate it to what this tax impact would be. Um, and elders does a really great job with us as well. Whenever um we have had a bond question, there is a, an opportunity for you to go onto their website. You can put in all of your tax in, information. And it would give you an exact dollar amount for this one component. You're right, there's going to be other things that might be playing into your levy, but we would be able to share this information regarding the bond specifically.
Very good. And that's always something we're, we're willing to have conversations about with you or any, any member of the community that wants to talk about that. Happy to share, have those conversations with.
We've had community members bring their, their tax estimates before to our truth in taxation meeting. And Elizabeth is really good at going through that. But yeah, it's, it's definitely something that can be, can be explained in more detail. I mean, I'm not the person to do it, but but there are people that can do that. So.
Yeah. Very good. Very good. So a couple of things else, other things I wanted to share with you that kind of along those lines. To Dave's point that I think we need to be considering is this is our current, the first page that you're going to be getting is our current commitments. So that is, that is what we have for our current high school bond project. And that runs through twenty thirty six. Then you can see in two thousand thirty one, we start to see a decrease in payments because of the way that that structure of that bond was, was designed to de, to decrease the payments at that time.
Does, does it decrease the cost to the homeowner or to the?
Yes.
Okay, so that, so the costs do start to go down for everyone. Okay.
That's where the taxes would go down in that particular year. The back page is just an example of what would happen if you were to put something on top of that. Um, whether that's, this, this one happens to be a twenty two million dollar example, but the point is the same. Is that, yes, we'd see an increase here.
What are the numbers on the, you know, epsilon ax? You know, you know, what is it like? This is, what is ten thousand or?
Of all the bond payments, do you have the access to that, Elizabeth? That's a.
And I apologize, I didn't, I couldn't hear the question.
It's, uh, so on the diagram that has the new bond example.
You know, we don't have any numbers on this.
Yeah, we, we just have the years, we don't have the.
Yeah, I, I put it on there for relative scale for a visual. I didn't put it on there for specific number purposes. But we can certainly try to find and get those. Because this, this is payment for the district schedule, which then is relative to individual taxes. It's debt payment. Yeah. Yeah. But we can certainly get that for you.
But yeah, I mean, just, just out of curiosity, like, yeah, what range are we talking here? You know, is it, is it a two thousand dollar difference in, in jumping or are we talking, you know, like, yeah, that would help a little bit. Yeah.
And I have the fine print documents, didn't print that one out for that.
Yep.
How does the numbers in that tax table refer to that? Because it says, you know, as Charlie example, two hundred thousand dollar house means a hundred and sixty seven dollars if you do the full shebang. Is that full? Is that just the change in the next few years, but then it'll be a greater change in those last few or am I kind of comparing them wrong?
So, so this is the dollar value the district pays.
Entire district.
The entire district pays on that bond payment. Okay? That's distributed thus amongst the taxpayers based on what their rate is.
Because this is for the whole twenty. Okay.
Yes, it's the rate is, yeah, for that.
And I guess just to remind the public, so they voted, they approved, it was a thirty million dollar bond for twenty years. Okay.
Correct. Yeah. And this is, it would be based on if we were, if you were to look at something for twenty additional years. That's what this particular conversation is. And keep in mind that we're in a place where we are gathering information. And this is end in mind of what we want to potentially could be doing. So we have to remember right now that we're not selling a bond.
Right.
We're gathering information, figuring out where we are. And this is going to be particularly important when I get two slides from now. We talk about next steps. We're not selling a bond at this time. We're figuring out what the next best plan is. So we have to gauge our communication appropriately and our questions appropriately.
In this scenario that you have here, basically you're kind of almost flipping the way that we would pay for a new bond because you, you would pay less in the early years and then more later on. Is that what it looks like to me?
Correct. Yeah.
So that, okay.
Because theoretically, and of course every, every twenty year plan changes before twenty years is over, that's just reality. Is when we thought we'd get to twenty thirty, thirty before having to add in our bond, that's just not the way life is working out right now. This should stay very consistent for us over the course of that twenty years.
And really this would only add another six years or so to what our current twenty year bond is. We're just talking about potentially increasing the amount.
Yeah. Yeah, there isn't anything else.
But instead of like expiring a twenty year and then asking for another twenty year, so there is a kind of a difference.
And we are looking at tax relief in twenty thirty one, but not really until then in our current structure. It's the reality of what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
There are two things I wanted you to look at in terms of, again, just gathering information. This is kind of to your, um, to our question about what can we control within the realm of a school district versus what the county and the city, um, who, who have different means. They don't have to do a voter approved stuff for some of their, their levies, which is important to think about. This is just how we compare on an, on an estimated market value, a hundred fifty thousand dollar home. This is what your annual taxes would have been in paid twenty twenty one relative to our neighboring school districts. And so you can see that right now, um, we are certainly not the very lowest. We're certainly not the very highest. We're actually just slightly under the group average, you know, of the comparisons here listed here. Um, and we're just about the same as the state average in terms of, of that. So right now, um, when we think about whether we'd be increasing that, we would potentially be going above that average, which is something to consider, um, but we're not um already over the average in terms of our school pers, percentage of our taxes. So just something again for our reference to think about um as we move forward this, on this. And then the last of the many handouts I have for you today regarding to taxes is this is something that, that elders pulled for us in terms of this is the the tax base by property type for here for, for Wasika. And this tells us how much is homestead land, how much is qualifying agriculture land, commercial, all the various types. So when we think about this document here, it gives us the relative amount of how many of people in our, in our community actually fit into each of those categories percentage wise. Um, and you can see that we are a very high egg community, which is no surprise to anybody, but you can see the percentage here listed out. You can see what the percentage of homeowners who are contributing to our tax base is. And we can look at just how we're looking at the general um breakdown of our tax base in Wasika County. And so that's important, or Wasika School District, excuse me, you think about that um in terms of how we, how our community breaks down. Again, it's just reference. And why it's important is if you go to the next slide, um, we're already on the next slide. Okay. So why it's important is if you look at the at egg tax, tax credit for Wasika, the egg tax credit has been increased in statute since our last bond. And so it is at the point where the rates are such that because of the percentage of egg land that we have, it's at a point where twenty percent of our bond would now be covered by the egg tax credit. So if, for example, we went out for a twenty million dollar bond, four million of that would be covered by the state egg credit. And what that means is that's, and it's, and it is only for the egg, um, qualified egg uh owners. But that basically is relief for them on their taxes. So they don't pay that amount. The state then kicks in that amount, so that twenty percent. Yeah.
That's free money.
It's free money. It is free money. It does not help the homeowners, does not help the commercial industrial, doesn't help those part of our community.
But if almost forty percent of our tax base is agriculture, that's.
It does. It does. And it basically comes down to. And it basically comes down to it's a 20% of whatever bond we would ever, if we were to choose to go out for one, would be covered by this ag tax credit. And that is something that is in every conversation I've had so far with our legislators, with our lobbyists, with people who are working for us. That's not going away, that ag tax credit. So it wouldn't be something that five years from now, it just got pulled out of statute. That wouldn't.
Farm families still going to pay taxes on their house.
Correct, correct.
They're going to pay, you know, it's, it's still, it still comes back to their house.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah.
Yep, exactly right. So that's just something for you to consider in terms of, we've got going on. And I, so other factors we need to be considering. One of them is the ag tax credit. We do have the opportunity for some state-funded money if we were to look at something like that. The other thing is we'd have to consider what would we potentially use a vacated building for? If we were to choose based on the end of this, when we get to the end of this, that we're going to go to another site, what's the plan for Hartley? And knowing what our community, based on what our task force has said to us and based on conversations I've had, there's lots of ideas, but the most important thing is that we have some sort of a plan. And that's what we'd have to develop by the end of this conversation. If that's where, I haven't gone to details with that yet because I have to know, I think, that that's kind of where we're heading before we start really firming up any partnerships about where to go with that. And it might not be based on where we are in our conversation. So have to just work through that. There are factors to consider in our process is that there are other LTFM needs in the district. So we do have needs at, at WIS. WIS is now coming to be, it's a 90s, you know, building. It's, there's going to be needs and some issues there that need to be repaired. This building continues to be a, a really strong, positive building for us. It's going to continue to need the projects, the, the abatement, the HVAC upgrades, things that it needs to do. It's, this building gets used a lot for various things. Is it used to its capacity? Some of the days it is, sometime of the day it's not because of just the way programming works. But there is something assigned to every space in this building for at least some or most of the day. So we need to make sure we're maintaining it. It doesn't really have the green space and the parking and the design of an elementary building. So that's something that has been, the, the cost to, to reno this building to something that could handle elementary students, parking and drop-off and green space. It just doesn't, that would start to get to be the same amount as some of the ideas we have here with that. So that's something we need to think about too. So you can go to the next slide there, Caitlin. So what does this all mean? I just threw a lot of things at you right now. But based on the next steps really, for our task force recommendation and all the conversation that we've had thus far, it really comes down to now gathering some community feedback. Our task force was confident that there is identified need. And the need is legitimate, and there are things we need to think about. What was not as confident from our task force is will our community support one idea versus another if at all? And what do we need to do if, if, if the plan going forward? So I think our task force members were much more supportive of the idea that, yep, there's a need, and now the board needs to gather some feedback to decide what the next steps really could be. And we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of work on this over the last few years. What we have not done yet is got a broad-scale community outreach about this particular topic. And that's where we are right now. So as, that first bullet and the first clear bullet is important. What do we want to know? I think what we want to know, and this is where I also want to get your feedback as the board, is we want to gather information about a potential project. We're not trying to sell a bond right now. And so it's important that our survey participants do understand the intent. And so why, why that becomes as important is it becomes, which of the methods do we use to gather information? I do think we want to be conscious of which ones we do because I don't want to give the impression that we're selling a bond. And for example, square number three there, about do we do listing information sessions right now during the survey? Or does that give the impression that we're trying to sell something and we've determined our end already? And we haven't, we truly haven't. So maybe we stay away from that. Maybe we do something on our website with information that way. Because I, we don't want to sway people's opinion or have anyone feel that this is an authentic outreach because it really is at this point. Next steps, I really think, is to engage in some of these ser, uh, feedback. Morris Leatherman survey, that if you recall from 2015 bond, that's the scientific survey where the company goes and they reach out and get their sample. I think it's 400 residents of various samples, representation of your community. We pay them to do that. They have about a two-week window to get their work done. They use phone calls, they use other outreach we talked about. I know that one of our recently facility committee meetings talked about the concerns about us only being a phone outreach because we don't answer the phones. That's something they have to be able to pull off to get the, our value from them. Elizabeth, did that come up in your conversation with Peter at all?
Um, I believe it's in their proposal that they have a method that they begin with, but to make sure that they have a valid sample size after, I believe it's after a week, depending upon the success that they've had. Then they turn to other various methods to be able to make sure that they do have a valid scientific survey. And we can definitely vet that when we have future conversations with them as well just to, again, help us feel more comfortable moving forward with, with something like that.
You just mentioned 400 sample, I don't think that's sufficient.
Well, that, that's my next square up there. So that's what, that's what their, that's what their proposal has right now. And that's the price point that we are at. We certainly could ask them to increase that and see what that cost, cost point would be.
You just like the, the, it's only the first one. Morris Leatherman survey and district, district survey would be another one that would go to everybody?
That's, that's what I'm proposing. I'm, because the scientific survey is, okay, they have their methods. I kind of want to see what they come up with, but I want, I do want more access. I do want more insight. And that's where I'm wondering if we do then a, a variation of there to say, you know, we can communicate, this survey is happening, a sample of our community is being selected. However, if you don't get that call, we'd love for you to participate. And please respond in this way. That's what, that, that's my, my thought process there.
So your thought is to do both?
To do, my thought is to do both of those, yeah. Because it gives us to get a little bit of a cross-reference. Because then one, if they don't, if they don't jive.
Right.
Then that gives us a really good idea of where we're at.
Or if they do, then that also, yeah.
Right, right. But it's $16,000 to the Morris Leatherman survey, which is what we budgeted for, what 15.5, I think we budgeted because we knew that was, and based on six years ago, that it hasn't gone up much. So that's, that's their cost. It is research-based, they do have a lot of evidence that they get the right information. It was successful last time in identifying what our threshold would be here in Wasika. And so I would, I would recommend we, we look at both of those. My concern with that one is it's quite long.
Okay.
And so we have to vet that out about what's the important stuff and what isn't. Try to shorten it, we talked about that in one of our recent committee meetings. And then our, our district one could potentially be more brief.
Is it 16,000 for, for both of them or only for one or?
Well, that's for the Morris Leatherman survey. The district survey would be something we would just create, yeah.
And then how would you get the, I mean, would you send postcards out to the community to, for, for the district survey? Like, how would you?
Yeah, I, I think we would do, we would, could do mailings. We would probably do some, some email work. We would do some work through our service organizations.
I'm assuming you want to reach more than just our district community. You'd want to reach all of our.
Yeah.
The whole, everyone.
Yeah, and we have access to all of that through our community ed process. Our community ed survey goes, or, excuse me, our community ed information goes out to every resident.
Right.
So we have that ability to do that.
Do we want to save $16,000 and not to do the first one for 400 sample? I don't know that's.
I think the first one would be a deeper dive. And I kind of, I, I think, I, I would appreciate an outside entity gathering the information. I don't know, I'd be, I'd be kind of curious, but.
I like the idea of doing both because it kind of is a blend of what you're both saying. You know, you've got an outside, a business that does this. They're quite experienced, and we have experience with them. But then we're, we're doing some things in-house too. So like you say, if they come into agreement, that tells us something. If they don't come into agreement, that tells us something else. Or if we just do one or the other, you aren't going to have that cross-check.
Well, and I think, I mean, the, the Morris Leatherman survey, I mean, they, they say they're going to survey 400 people, right? I mean, they're going to get 400 responses. Whereas, I mean, we could send out our survey and get 100, like, you know.
Get 100, they might get 1,000.
Right. So I, I feel like the Morris, the Morris Leatherman survey, we're guaranteed to get 400 responses. Ours, I mean, we're putting it out there to everyone, please weigh in, but it's up to them if they want to.
There is also something to be said for an objective. I, I, it's hard for us to be seen as objective, let's be honest. And so we are, we are trying to gather authentic information. I do want the truth, but obviously we need facilities for our students.
Yep.
Whereas a, and you're right, Dave, they're a professional organization that does this. And at some point, there is expert, cost of the expertise.
I don't quite understand it all, but I, I know that there's a real science to doing this because if you look at some of these national surveys, I mean, how many people, how many millions of people now in the United States? And they'll take a sample size of a few thousand, and they'll come up with what they come up with, and they'll say this is accurate plus or minus 3%. Well, there's got to be a lot of science in that to be able to do that and say that with any credibility.
And to your, I mean, I appreciate $16,000 seems like an unnecessary amount of money to spend. I don't disagree with that, but I think I would appreciate the, the outcome, I don't know.
The professional, the professional side of it, that's.
And, and I think we're really trying to do our due diligence here and, and make the right decision and.
I, I don't know of too many, and I think that's, maybe that's, maybe that kind of calls the question a little bit. I don't know of too many bond processes that I've been aware of that have not gone through a professional survey like that at some point in their preparation for the bond. Because if they say no way, don't even try it, then that.
Better listen up.
You know.
They're reporting more money towards it, that's.
Right, the, but the, but the reality is, if as a board, it doesn't really feel like, or, or feel like we need to do something right now, then I could see not spending the money. But I, my recommendation is that we need to consider doing something with, with our Hartley building. And this investment gets us one step down that, that decision-making role. But I do recognize that the cost is, is what it is.
I just, I don't mind 16,000 if they go to 100,000 people, whatever. 400, sorry, just too little to get.
$40 per person.
400.
Yeah, but $40 per person to get 400 of them, yeah. Which is not nothing, it's not nothing.
I'm just saying, I just, you know, if they include more people, we have 9,000 people just in Wasika. What about county? It's what is the percentage for 100 people?
Well, I mean, it depends on what our actual, like, what is our voting base? How many would be voting on our?
One thing that I just, the, the only thing I would add to that, I respect all those thoughts on that. The only thing I would add to that is I didn't come up with the 400. You didn't come up with the 400, the professional research organization did. And so they must feel like that's enough to give us the information that we need. So we certainly could get a quote from them or another organization for doing more and see what the difference would be. That, that's the middle range usually of the surveys you could do. But I think, I think that does give us some additional information at this time.
One other thing I just wanted to add about a, a professional survey as well is they're able to look at a cross-section of our demographics. And so they are able to strategically choose households that do have children, households that don't have children, ag community, commercial property, individuals. So that is also part of their scientific research is trying to get as much of a, a combination of our population that truly represents the makeup of our population. So I, I just wanted to offer that regarding a scientific survey, some of the benefits of doing that as well.
Yeah, so they're, they're not just randomly picking 400 people, they are strategic about those 400.
Yeah, purposeful sampling, we can call that, yeah. So, and, and I think as far as the other bullets on there, the other squares that are up there, I put listing sessions and, and, and whether or not we're giving information sessions. And I think that I'm always open to any phone call or stop in and visit with me about questions people have. And we'll invite that based on our, our website. But I don't want to get ahead of ourselves either on where we are in the process. And when I said, now about 40 minutes ago, what I said was, we want to be clear on where we are in the process, which right now we are. We have some ideas, we have some thoughts. Now we're gathering authentic community feedback. And so I don't want to give the impression that we're trying to push something. So unless you have other thoughts, I feel like we want to invite any conversation anybody has. But to have a, an information session seems a little premature. When we can put that information on our website, get it out in people's invitations, when they get invited to do a survey, the link to that information will be there. They have access to that. We'll explain why we're doing it, what we're doing. I think we have access to those things.
I agree, I think that that's, I think that's wise. I, I don't think we need to, we can save the, the, the listing type sessions for a different phase. And I don't think we're there yet, you're right.
I agree. Because then if you go to the next, next slide there, Caitlin, really my goal is, we're planning, beginning these implement, these feedback tools here this month. It's about a seven or eight-week turnaround from the moment you kind of initiate one of those processes to get, and for us to develop what we're going to do and get that out to people. In April, we kind of complete that and gather some more information. And then we'll, we'll review the gathered information in May, hopefully May. June, if we get delayed any, any information we have to get, determining the next steps, what we want to do, whether that's proceeding with some sort of action on the facilities, or we know we're not going to do something right now. And we have that other key piece of information, which is, I think, our community input.
I've got a question. If, if we do both surveys, does that mean that potentially 400 people are going to get two surveys to do?
Well, they would have the option to do two.
Okay.
The, the, the most important thing about, about if the district were to send a second tool out is that that's an option that we want to make sure everybody has access to. And so if you don't want to feel like, I want my voice to be part of this conversation, then please do that. If you feel like, well, what we're doing with those purposeful sampling represents me, okay, that's great, I don't have to do it, that sort of thing. But it all is going to be considered as part of the conversation.
And if you get the phone call or however they, they contact people and you already answered it, but you still want to go take the survey because you're curious what questions the district is asking, totally fine.
And we'll model them almost identical so that it's, we want to make sure we're measuring the same thing.
So would we do some education and publicizing of this? That you may end up doing the survey twice if you so choose? Because you might be chosen to do the.
Well, right, we would tell people what we're doing, yeah. We would explain what was happening.
Some people in town, you're saying, oh, I just did a survey, what the heck, you know?
Sure, yeah.
And maybe the, the professional ones can also tell that and what, when they contact them. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll see, they probably won't care what we're doing. That's not.
But we need to think of it as two different, not necessarily a survey that, that is this group and this group and combined they are one, they are two distinct surveys.
Yep. That can help lead to how we want to find. And one's kind of more of a proactive, I want to be involved versus I'm being purposely sought out.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of doing both. It's, we, we have it budgeted for this year to, to do the professional survey. I think, I think, I personally would like to give as many people as, as possible a chance to weigh in on this. So it, in that regard, I think doing a district survey as well makes sense. So that's, that's me, but.
And we, and we always, I mean, remember that they're working for us, this is a contract.
Right.
And so we always can ask, what, could you get 600 people? We can always ask those questions, what does that mean? If, but there's a reason why they chose that amount, so.
And if we, and if we do that survey and can get results, I mean, I think it's, we have to, we have to be responsible enough to make sure we are asking those things before we propose something.
And knowing that we're gonna propose something that we have evidence that feels that people support and they want. Not doing it means we're going a little more blind.
And, and just, the one thing I didn't cover really, I don't mean to delay our conversation too much, but the one thing that I wanted to make sure is that really because of the way, when I talked about the cost, both of these projects really can be scalable in a very similar range. And so I, what we've asked Morris Leatherman to start considering is, we want to really know about, how would you feel about this option? How would you feel about this option? Not, take the cost out, how do you feel about these two options? Oh, and by the way, here's the cost threshold that either could fit into. And what is the, because, um, I, I'm, it's not usually good practice to say, here are your two options, this one's cheaper or less expensive, uh, well, I'm gonna take that one, obviously. Whereas we want to make sure we're looking at what the total project value is, and that's, either could be scaled to be about the same. So we're trying to get a feedback, and because we haven't said it, but it's kind of underlying, what are the heartstrings around Hartley? What are, what is the, what would be our community concerns about not having that building? That's a real part of what we're trying to determine here, so, very good.
Are you going, are you planning to talk a little bit more about the questions tonight, or?
Well, we just, we have a meeting set up with Peter, I think, next week, so we'll share that out with the, with, with the, with the entire board.
I would like to call out, you know, to, for our survey district to have the third option, or have some kind of, if I do not agree with none of those options, why, or what is my, you know, if I don't like any of the options, that there's the third one, either, you know, express why.
So some open response kind of thing?
Open response, yes.
Very good, very good.
It's always nice to know how the thinking goes, why, you know, what are the whys behind the, the, the opinion, you know, so.
For sure.
So what, what factors are, what factors are you considering here in your opinion of this, yeah? I think we, we need to know that stuff.
Yeah, very good, very good. We have typically what, what, um, is about a two week window of preparation for the survey, in which time I would make sure the entire board sees what we're gonna be asking and have the chance to have feedback on that. So that'd be good. But I agree with you a hundred percent, we want to know, doesn't help us to see that twenty percent says no if we don't know why, what their concerns are.
Yeah.
Right, very good, good. I appreciate the board continuing this, this is a, this is a, can be an exhausting part of our work, because it just doesn't go away. And it just keeps coming at us as we keep planning ahead, but it also is a very, such an important part of our work, because it impacts the entire community in a way that some or other academic work does not. And so I think, I appreciate your engagement and continue to stay with it on, with us on it. And regardless of what we do, we're gonna do the best we possibly can to be financially responsible and take care of our, our students and the entire community of Wasika. But, um, sometimes I think it's really important to identify where you are in a project and purposely move forward. And we're laying groundwork, I don't, I would rather not open a fire hydrant on this. I want to make sure that we're giving information so people can digest it. And started, starting, some of that's starting tonight, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions? What year was WIS built again?
Ninety-seven.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, ninety-seven? Yeah, thank you.
I have just a couple of questions for, you know, the, when we, just when you were talking about if we do relocate, you know, do we know how many soccer fields will be taken away from the Wasika Soccer Association?
Depends how big we build the addition. We, we, we don't know exactly until we get to what the scalable a project is gonna be, yeah.
And when we just, if we'd go with remodel, what do we do with our children while the project would be?
Yeah, that, that one's a little bit not easier, but I have an answer for that one. Because remodeling a building, you oftentimes can do it while the students are in the building. So you would, the, the model that we looked at with Wold was, there would be an addition of a handful of classrooms. And so really, once that addition is built, you do that first, and then you relocate a series of classrooms there, while you remodel those classrooms. And you relocate, it, it's kind of a, it's kind of a little bit of pass the room around.
Yeah.
Well, and then a lot of it's done in the summertime. And really, a remodel like that is probably a two summer project, is what Paul was telling us from Wold.
And that's what they did at the high school, yeah, so they, they would, because.
Rotate them around.
Yeah, like, well, like, they did like the science wing, or like, whatever their phase, they had all their phases, like their four phases, and, and, and no one had a permanent classroom, you knew, you knew you were gonna move, so.
Yeah.
And I would assume this, you wouldn't move the Hartley students into there until it's all done, because then you have the, as much as possible.
Oh, if you were to go to WIS.
If you're, if you're doing add-on to WIS.
Correct, right, that's more of something you can do all in one shot.
I suppose if you're doing the add-on to, or the remodel of.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was referring to, yeah, the remodeling.
But, I mean, you are right, I mean, if an additional at WIS would, we'd have to address sports, the sports facilities that are out there, so.
And, um, and.
Parking lot today.
Parking lot, and we talked about that in the.
Yes.
Talked about it in task force at a great detail, it'd have to be some traffic adjustments.
Well, I think in general, traffic needs to be adjusted out there, whether or not we move another school out there. So, I don't know.
And that actually plays into our accessibility conversation we had a few weeks ago with our, our parent, so that if we are gonna be doing something back there, that's an ideal time to make some adjustments in our accessibility as well, or not, yeah.
You had said we had some long-term LTFM others, other needs, not necessarily here, but we also have some at WIS currently.
Correct.
I assume if we do the, the remodel plan, does that include all of those, or at least a lot of those?
Remodel of WIS?
If we do the remodel, the expansion add-on to WIS?
Well, then, then that becomes a scalable project. So if you go with the minimum, you're basically just adding on to the building. If you go, if you go a little bit higher, you could do more of those projects at WIS.
So it may reduce our long-term LTFM needs, because we're covering some of that.
It, it might, and then that's one thing to consider if you are looking at remodeling the Hartley building, those needs don't go away at WIS.
Then, then we definitely have those at WIS.
Yeah, but you've reset the clock on Hartley, so you've got, you know, it, it works a little bit.
But again, also, you talked about, both projects are scalable.
Correct.
Which means both projects, whatever, whatever dollar amount the community ultimately would support, doesn't mean that we couldn't put some of that towards LTFM at, at any of our buildings. So, I mean, it's right, it's, so.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, no, it's good.
Kids need rides and stuff.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I don't have anything else to keep prolonging the conversation, so that's good.
Yeah, any, any other questions, so? Good. All right, no. Um, I, I assume you're gonna follow up also with our facilities committee on this?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we will probably meet next week, could be my goal, if we can find a time, or the week after that, right away.
Perfect.
Cool.
Okay. All right, then, if there's nothing else, I think that concludes our March workshop. So, uh, next meeting is March seventeenth, where you're green for St. Patrick's Day.
I will be out of town.
Okay, thank you.